The July 13 meeting of the Williamsburg City Council will come to order. Mr. Trivett, would you call the roll, please?
Yes.
Mr. Zhang?
Here.
Mr. Pons?
Here.
Mayor Freiling?
Here.
Vice Mayor Foster?
Here.
Ms. Ramsey?
Here.
First item on the agenda today after the roll are the council minutes of June 5, June 7, and June 8, 2017. Are there any additions or corrections?
I move to approve, sir.
Second. Mr. Trivett, when you're ready.
Mr. Zhang?
Aye.
Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Freiling?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Foster?
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey?
Aye.
This takes us to matters of special privilege, and at this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Collins.
I'd like to call our new chief of police, Sean Dunn, to the podium to be recognized. Chief Dunn joins the city of Williamsburg after a three-year stint as a chief in Martinsville, Virginia. Prior to that, he served a lengthy career, starting as a police officer in Portsmouth, working up to the highest in the command staff short of a chief. So, he's joining us after also a lengthy selection process, a rigorous assessment center participated by both our community members and professionals in law enforcement. And we welcome him to Williamsburg. He has a good background in 21st century policing methods and community policing. And welcome, Chief Dunn. You're welcome to say a few words.
Well, thank you, Mr. Collins. I appreciate that. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, I would just like to say it's quite an honor being here. I really appreciate the confidence that you've bestowed in me to be your police chief. This is day number four of week three, so I'm still obviously transitioning, but it's been a real pleasure so far. It's been a lot of staff, been very helpful. Had the opportunity to meet a number of community members, but I see a few here tonight I haven't met, and I look forward to having a chance to meet many more as we go along. So, again, I just want to say thank you very much for having me here, and thank you for everything.
Welcome aboard, Chief. It's a pleasure to have you with us.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
This takes us to our public hearings today, of which we have none. And that brings us to reports. The first is the monthly financial statement. Mr. Collins, anything you'd like to highlight?
None at this time. Stats available if you have any questions. Finance Director Sarah did give the cash basis year-end report on Monday, which is available to the public, and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions?
Good. Thank you.
Okay. That takes us to the monthly departmental operating reports.
Nothing to highlight at this time. Mark Barham, our IT director, pointed out, and I'll point out again to the public, that we're transitioning to a more user-friendly, public-friendly format for our operating reports in the coming months. But if council has any particular questions for management or staff on the operating reports, we're at your disposal.
So, you're hearing none? Move on to city manager reports. The first is the Williamsburg Library HVAC air handling units.
I will take this on. If no one else from the library is standing... Betsy, would you like to come forward? Okay. Now, I'll lead into it, and Betsy can add from the podium as she sees fit.
Mr. Collins, could you introduce?
Yeah.
Many of the audience may not know.
Yeah. There are many new faces in Williamsburg. The Williamsburg Regional Library system is graced with a new director, Betsy Fowler. Betsy, how long have you been now?
Four months.
Four months. New in Williamsburg is, I believe, about 12 to 15 years. So, welcome to join me with new.
Thank you.
Just a brief background, the city's capital improvement plan identified the replacement of two air handlers at the Williamsburg Library. Both units are approximately 20 years old and have reached their serviceable life. Staff and Williamsburg Regional Library staff both reviewed the proposal from Demuth Train. There's been one adjustment since Monday, and it's been in a positive direction, reducing the negotiated amount in the proposals by an additional $20,000. However, that is still $45,973 above the FY18 budgeted amount of $300,000. The plan estimates were low due to using some 2013 numbers, and staff in Demuth Train worked through and updated those numbers for current needs and current part costs. There is an additional air handler, the third air handler, that is scheduled to be replaced in next year's budget, and that estimate will be reviewed by staff and the library's staff prior to the FY19 capital budget being prepared. And, Betsy, if you'd like to add anything else?
I think you covered everything. We're in the capable hands of Tom Leach, who I think is here and has more information if you all have any questions about the specifics.
Questions for Ms. Fowler?
No questions about the unit itself, but just for the clarification about the operating agreement between Williamsburg, James City County, and York County, and why we are incurring all of this cost. Can you talk a little bit about that?
I believe there's a regional contract that specifies that each jurisdiction is responsible for their building. And the library is responsible for the interior of the buildings, which is the painting and the maintenance and the upkeep. But the large-ticket items, the exterior, the roofs, we have to come to the jurisdictions for. So, James City County pays for their facility in Williamsburg, for Williamsburg.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Ms. Fowler, could you just say a few words about the need for this unit and what impact it has on the library and the use of the facility?
I think that a lot of the infrastructure is coming to the end of its lifespan in this building, and this is true, we had some issues with the grinders recently, and this is true of the HVAC. And I think they haven't... They're still operational, but they have indicated they're near the lifespan, into the lifespan, and they're recommending that they be replaced. Maybe Mr. Leach could add some additional information. I think they've done a study of all the infrastructure, if I'm not mistaken.
Welcome, Mr. Leach.
Yeah, she's exactly right there. Ashtrays gives us an expected life cycle, life cycle use of 15 years, and we're hitting 20 years, so we've really put these to their test. We're also going to gain a lot of efficiency out of the new system and with new operating controls, so it's going to help us out a great deal.
Great. Other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's hard enough for some people to go to the library, but to go to the library with no air conditioning, probably be even worse.
I was going to say, rain's very hard enough.
Would anybody like to make a motion?
I move that city council award the purchase and installation contract to Demuth Train for two HVAC air handling units at the Williamsburg Library in the amount of $345,973.
Second.
Mr. Trivett?
Mr. Zhang?
Aye.
Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Freiling?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Foster?
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey?
Aye.
Takes us to the second city manager report, fire department medic unit replacement.
Fire chief.
Mayor Freiling, members of council, the city's vehicle replacement plan for 2018 calls for the purchase of a new medic unit to replace an existing frontline medic unit. The unit that will be replaced is a 2008 Horton ambulance with approximately 80,000 miles on it. The new medic unit will be a 2017 Horton ambulance body mounted on a F-554 chassis. The factors considered in purchasing a new medic unit are condition of major components, reliability, and improved safety features for the patient and the EMS provider. To begin this process, we selected a committee comprised of department members along with a representative from Vehicle Services. This committee conducted extensive research into the different brands, the different manufacturers. They actually visited several localities that had recently purchased new medic units, talked to the operators, were able to identify some advantages and disadvantages, and in some cases, they were able to drive the medic units and get a feel for themselves what the medic unit was like. As a result of that work, the committee's recommendation was to purchase a 2017 Horton ambulance on a Ford chassis. A few things to point out about the ambulance industry. The average annual price increase of a medic unit right now is about 3% to 4% annually, with another approximately $1,000 to $1,200 increase on the chassis. One of the things I just wanted to point out here visually is, in the past, we've purchased commercial chassis. We found, over the years, that reliability of the commercial chassis has not been what we anticipated. Another problem that we face with the commercial chassis is, when it goes to that particular manufacturer for repairs, it sits in the line with all the other vehicles that are there for replacement. The advantage of a Ford or another manufacturer chassis, in this, in our instance, the one we're recommending is a Ford, it can go to a local dealer, and they're trained to make repairs. And in most cases, they understand the reportance of a first response vehicle and are able to work on that unit more quickly and get it back in service. Along with that, a big portion of the decision between not only reliability, but a commercial chassis is approximately $30,000 to $35,000 more than the current Ford chassis that we're recommending. So, with this new unit that we're recommending, I just want, I'm sorry, I just wanted to show you the photo here of the Ford chassis, as you can see the difference between the large commercial chassis cab and the Ford chassis, and the cab. One of the things this does, from a safety standpoint, is this will be the third medic unit. As you recall, in the past, we received some grant funding with some matching funds provided by the city to provide the new cot retention system with the power load cots. This will complete that transition with the purchase of a new medic unit. Again, that unit itself adds about $40,000 to the cost of a medic unit for that power load cot and the retention system. We also ordered this unit with four-wheel drive. We currently have an automatic snow chain system on our current units, and we've experienced some trouble with those in the past, so we were able to... We're recommending the four-wheel drive unit. Also made some custom modifications to the patient compartment that allows more space for the provider to treat the patient. One thing, we have the new five-point restraint system. It allows, while keeping the provider restrained, it allows them to work over top of the patient while remaining restrained, so it provides additional safety for the patient and for the provider. It also has a technology package, which is similar to aircraft. It has a black box that can monitor speed and maintenance items that may be an issue with the unit, so that's another thing that would help with the service of the unit. Our medic units responded over 3,000 calls in 2016, and as of yesterday, we're on pace to exceed that for 2017. We attempt to rotate the units to keep the mileage down on them. Typically, we run two medic units on a daily basis, and the third one, we keep in reserve. We try to rotate those units to keep the mileage down, but with maintenance issues, special events, and the number of calls, it's often difficult to rotate them to keep the mileage down. This new medic unit is proposed to be purchased under a cooperative purchase contract through Houston-Galveston Area Council of Governments, typically known as HGAC. This contract allows governmental agencies outside of the state of Texas to take advantage of a responsible bid awarded by HGAC to purchase ambulances. Staff determined the bid awarded to Fesco Emergency Sales Horton ambulance vehicles to be competitive. We worked with them to make some of the changes and modifications that fit Williamsburg for a contract price of $321,497. The funding for the medic unit was budgeted in the city's vehicle replacement plan for FY18 at $375,000. Obviously, a good portion of that savings came with the transition from the commercial chassis back to the Ford F-550 chassis. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thanks, Pat. Just a question about our current unit. Does that roll into our stock, and we get rid of a unit, the oldest unit, or are we doing something different with the unit replacement?
I've been in discussions with Mr. Collins to, with some options of how we potentially could use that medic as a standby unit, but we're still looking at whether that's the cost of the maintenance and what... It would still have to be a response vehicle, but use it for our special events to try to take some of the load off of the other medic units. And there have been occasions this year where, due to maintenance items, that we've had to borrow a medic unit to keep two medic units on the road. So, we're in discussion with some options to finalize that, and we'll inform council when we've completed that work.
I would just like to say thank you for all of the due diligence that you all have done to come up with the best medic unit to fit the needs of Williamsburg. And even though it's extremely expensive, it's still under budget and seems to meet everything that we need in a responsible way. So, thank you.
Thank you. The, obviously, the one that we're replacing is a 2008. That's not too old. Did that last as long as they routinely do, or did this one kind of run through the life cycle quicker than normal? I mean, what's your thoughts on that?
Since 2009, we started a 10-year replacement plan on the medic units. Obviously, this one's just a slight bit early, but that's due to the increased call volume. If you recall, some time ago, presented to council the number of responses that we've had that, obviously, a 36% increase in calls since 2008, so the units are on the road more. But we try to maintain a 10-year replacement plan for the number of calls that Williamsburg responds to.
Mr. Mayor, to help clarify, Pat, could you also say, if you order it today, when's delivery?
Pardon me?
If you order it today, when is delivery?
180 days.
So, it takes a while to deliver on the vehicle as well, and there'll be additional miles accrued between now and then.
Thank you very much, Chief, for the presentation, and it's always great to see to have reproducing savings on this as well, so thank you.
Chief, two questions. The first is regarding the anticipated maintenance of the Ford chassis versus the commercial chassis. Do we have any sense of what the comparative cost of that maintenance is? Do we expect it to be less with the Ford?
Yeah, I would expect it to be much less with the Ford. There's not a cost associated with a lot of the maintenance issues that we've had on our most recent commercial chassis, because it was all performed under warranty work. But the biggest hindrance to us during that time was the unit being out of service so long, because it's sitting on the lot waiting to be repaired with all those other vehicles, as I mentioned. But we do anticipate, because a local dealership can work on the vehicle, that the cost would be much less.
And is it fair to say that vehicles like this medical, medic unit end up with a lot more miles because of our mutual aid agreement with the surrounding jurisdictions, where we're not just responding to calls within the city of Williamsburg limits? We're going all over the area. Is that fair to say?
Yes, sir. That's accurate.
Your motion? Discussion?
Well, I was just going to say, and I think we take great pride in being able to provide our citizens and visitors with equipment that's going to, you know, take a vital role in making sure that they get to the hospital, or they're providing the service that they've grown to expect. And so, you know, making an investment like this, you know, it does cause a strain on the budget, but it's something that absolutely we do, because it's the right thing to do. Could we squeak a few more years out of this and then run the risk of, you know, it breaking down en route and then causing some other, you know, long-lasting effects on, you know, the patient inside? We could, but we don't want to do that. So, replacing this now before there's significant problems, I think is a good idea.
And it is in the budget for this year, too, so...
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that city council authorize the city manager to enter into a purchase agreement with FESCO, Emergency Sales Da... Horton Emergency Vehicles, total purchase price of $321,497.
Second. Mr. Trivett?
Mr. Zhang?
Aye.
Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Freiling?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Foster?
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey?
Aye.
Chief Dent, I don't see you going very far, so I'm imagining you're taking over the presentation on fire department self-contained breathing apparatus replacement.
Yes, sir, Mayor and city council. Another project in this capital improvements plan for 2018 included replacement of the fire department self-contained breathing apparatus, better known as SCBA. This proposal includes replacing all 32 units that are assigned to our apparatus and some of our training packs that are kept in reserve. This was a project that requires total replacement at one time due to the fact that the change in technology and the change in equipment would be hazardous to our employees to try to phase this equipment in. As you know, SCBA is an essential component of protective gear for firefighters. Our current equipment has fallen out of compliance with the National Fire Protection Association standards. It falls under the 2007 standard, and these packs will be compliant with the most recent standard, which is a 2013 standard. These units come with improved reliability, improved safety features, and some technology that provides enhanced operations when operating inside of structures. As we go, you'll see some of the positive impacts I wanted to point out, interoperability with our mutual aid partners. One of our mutual aid partners has already moved forward and replaced their apparatus. The other locality is currently exploring their options for the same type of apparatus. This equipment comes with a 15-year bumper-to-bumper warranty, which reduces the cost of ownership, which is, it's almost unheard of in the industry to have a 15-year bumper-to-bumper warranty on breathing apparatus. It also brings us into compliance with the 2013 NFPA standards, 1981 and 1982, and it's also CBRN-approved, which is chemical, biological, radiological, and nuclear. Some of the improved technology, if you look there on the shoulder strap, the control module is much improved. You'll see it has the red triangle, almost a triangle there on the shoulder harness. That display, we currently have problems with the display because of the age, but as you bring that display up, it gives you the amount of air pressure that you have in your cylinder. You have to push buttons to make it light up so you can read it. This, the new technology is designed, so when you, it's much like some of the new TV remotes, when you pick it up, it automatically lights up. So, when you pick it up, it lights up. You automatically have an indication of your air supply in your bottle. It also gives you the indication of a battery pack, and I'll cover some of the other things that it does in a few minutes. Improved communications. Right now, we have a speaker piece that fits to the face piece, and you still have to talk extremely loud. With these new face pieces, they have built-in electronic communications that has a microphone, a speaker on the shoulder strap, and we can talk at a normal tone, and you can hear very clearly, so it enhances communication inside of a smoke-filled environment. It also removes, the type of communication device also removes the inhalation breathing. Currently in our face piece, if you're standing next to someone breathing air, you can hear this large noise of inhalation when they're taking in a breath. That's removed in this new air pack, so it also enhances communication. One of the things to point out with the firefighter safety, as if a firefighter is in a hazardous environment and begins to get low on air, this unit now has lights that light up around it on the backpack, so it indicates to other people around him that he's low on air. It also, there's a connection on the rear of the bottle that allows you to hook up to another SCBA unit and buddy breathe air from that other unit if you run out of air. There's also a light that comes on that identifies that connection. One of the big advantages for, over our current air packs is we're going to a 4,500-cylinder from a 30-minute cylinder, basically. So, this new cylinder gives us 45 minutes of air supply as opposed to 30 minutes of air supply. With the technology, the size of the bottle, our 30-minute bottle is large. The new bottle is much smaller, but gives us more time inside of a building, so it allows firefighters to work a little longer, but also provides that extra bit of air. If they find themselves in a situation where they need to evacuate, they have some extra air supply. The new face piece design, as I mentioned earlier, we now have a microphone attached to the side of the face piece that has four AAA batteries in it, which adds a lot of weight to the face piece. It also create, the new face piece creates a wide-view lens, which gives you more visibility inside of a structure. And then, the heads-up display, as you see there on the right, the right set of green lights is a visual display to the wearer that, of what their air pressure is in the bottle. So, not only do they have, they can look at their control module and see a number. The lights will change from green to yellow to red, and when it gets to red, they know they have 35% air volume left, and it's time to start considering leaving the building. The icons on the right, I'll cover exactly what, how that's transmitted shortly, but those three icons, it's for evacuation, and it also is another alarm indicator for your personal alert safety device that it's getting ready to sound. And I'll show you how that works, or talk to you about how that works in a few minutes. Another huge advantage to the change in the harness itself is, the harness is much lighter, but it's also created a swivel back brace, and it's adjustable, so it's able to ride higher on your hips. It provides more comfort, and it also reduce, it's going to reduce injury due to the weight not being, drawing back on your shoulders as opposed to riding on your hips. The swivel lumbar makes it much more comfortable than the current air packs that we wear. One of the issues that we've had with our battery packs in our current units, we have two different battery packs, and one is 4C batteries, and as I mentioned with the face piece, it's four AAA batteries. Those batteries do not last very long at all. The new unit comes with one rechargeable battery pack that powers all the electronics in the unit. So, that technology is there. The batteries, the batteries will last for years before they require replacement, again reducing some of the cost of ownership. Also in that control module is a new integrated thermal imaging camera. Right now, we have thermal imaging cameras. They cost anywhere from $8,000 to $23,000, depending on the options. We now have a thermal imaging camera integrated into the control module, so at, right there, without, it reduces some of the entanglement of not having that extra heavy piece hanging from your gear, but they're able to look at that control module. It aids in finding the seat of the fire, but most importantly, it aids in finding victims if we need to locate victims within a structure by different heat signatures identified through the thermal imaging camera. These units will also have software that the incident commander at his vehicle on a laptop is able to monitor each person. So, there's so many, there's several safety devices built in. They have their control module that sounds. They have safety alerts on the harness that sounds, but also the incident commander with the software available is able to stand at the incident command post and monitor each individual, monitor the team. And with those icons in the face piece, he can send evacuation messages and indicate, and alert that icon in the face piece to those individual wearers. So, that's something, that's, again, new technology that is not currently available in the units that we wear. And a couple of things, we, I realize this, you know, it's a large sum of money to replace this equipment at one time, but I feel we've done our due diligence. We applied for a FEMA Assistance to Firefighters grant on a regional basis with our mutual aid partners two years ago, and we were denied. We applied a year ago as the city of Williamsburg, and we were denied. As grant funds at the federal level had become tighter, we were denied both of those grants. So, we were trying to find grant opportunities to replace this equipment, and we've just reached a point where we, you know, I think it's necessary for the safety of our firefighters and provide them the best technology and equipment out there for their safety that we submitted to Mr. Collins to include in the capital improvements projects. The other thing, this equip, our current equipment, we've been told that at approximately $18,000 trade-in value. And you may say, well, if we're getting rid of it, why is there trade-in value? There are some companies in the United States who take that equipment, clean it up a little bit, and they sell it to other organizations around the world that are not necessarily concerned about NFPA-compliant air packs. They just want to have air packs. So, we've been offered, we've been told that, based on the equipment we have now, approximately $18,000 trade-in value. This equipment is proposed to be purchased under cooperative purchase contract through the city of Virginia Beach. Staff determined the bid awarded to Fire Protection Corporation to be competitive for a contract price of $239,973. The budgeted amount was $240,000. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions? Seven dollars. That's pretty good. Within seven bucks. Questions? Just, you know, technology, it's nice to see that this is, technology advances are being applied to people who are on the front lines, not just... being applied to people who are on the front lines, not just everyday life. Just, all those different apparatus have been condensed into one system. Really impressive. I'm glad we're able to provide this to our first-line responders and also better prepare them to serve the community. So I feel it's a worthwhile investment.
I agree, and it was a lot of information, and it seems that everything's been thought of. It's sort of like, you know, space age a few years ago. Who would have ever thought? And as you say, it's a lot of money, but if you take away what the trade-in is and divide it by 32, because it would be for all of them, right? It comes out to be about $6,900 apiece, which I think is less than one component that you mentioned from the previous, or what we currently have. So it does seem like it's a good value, and it's nice to know that we're able to budget for these core services in our CIP. So thanks for all your diligence, hard work.
Did I hear you correctly to say that James City County and York County use the same apparatus?
James City County has already made the transition, and York County is still exploring options of how they fund it. But we all collaborate and talked about having the same apparatus. Obviously, I can't speak for them when it comes down to the final phase of their selection, but that was one of the factors considered, is that we're all operating, when we respond on a call, it's seamless, so we want everything to be seamless.
Sure.
So that all of our apparatus is identical.
Well, and that's where I was heading to. I think, you know, if the equipment that we have here in the city is, kind of mimics what's in the county, there's got to be some opportunity there to enhance safety for the firefighters. You had mentioned that the device, you can follow the devices on your laptop. Can you also then follow James City County's? If there's a major event and there's multiple departments in an incident, is there that type of?
With the current air packs, I believe that is capable with the software, is that we're able to identify those air packs and they can enter into our system.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, again, chief. To me, this is a no-brainer, but I think producing greater efficiencies, both of safety for our frontliners and also just, you know, moving forward, not having to have a place and deal with the maintenance costs, I think that's, it's something that makes complete sense. Although, I will address one thing that, you know, I've met with some folks along from door knocking and just seeing them around about town, and they have made a point mentioning, saying, no, it seems like the fire department's just buying all these equipments. And I have to disagree, because this, like I said before, produces the efficiencies that we need. And particularly, you guys are on the front lines in case that there is a fire. You know, one of the things that I've heard is that they contend that there are not many fires, but what happens when we do have to fire? We want to make sure that everybody, you know, our city employees, our firefighters are safe, and that they can get to what they need to do without any, anything holding back. So I appreciate this. Congratulations to you and city staff on getting this within $27. I think that's awesome. But maybe that's just me geeking out, but I appreciate it again and happy to support
Could you, on the bottle transition, a firefighter comes out of a building, needs to go back in, what's the turnaround time?
Well, it depends on, it depends on actual conditions and the amount of staffing that we have at that particular incident. Most of the time, it's just, they come out, pop that bottle off their back, a new one in the harness, lock it down, and they're ready to go. Obviously, if we have the staffing, we want to give them some rehab time before they re-enter a building. But if, especially now that we're with 45-minute bottles, they're going to be working longer than they did with a 30-minute bottle.
You know, this is life and death stuff. Nobody plans on having, getting trapped in a fire, and I can't imagine the horror of doing that, of being in that situation. I also can't imagine the courage it takes on a daily basis to respond over and over and over again, never knowing what's on the other end of that call. And if the people who are doing that response do not have confidence in the equipment, and how can we expect them to do their job? You used the term "no-brainer," Mr. Zhang. I mean, I think this sort of thing is imperative, not only for the safety of the firefighters, of course we want to protect them, but it also protects the people who are potential victims. The people who are in there fighting the fire can do a better job. They can support each other better, and they're more likely to find somebody and potentially save a life. And what price is somebody going to put on that?
That's right.
I would like to just point out, though, we've talked about, this is a little off-topic here, but two HVAC units, one medic unit, and self-contained breathing apparatus, and we're up over $900,000. And people wonder what we do with the surplus of the budget each year. We put it into purchases like this to protect this community. So on behalf of my colleagues, thank you very much for, you and all of our emergency services people do.
Well, thank you all for your support. I know, as you mentioned, that's quite a bit of money, and I mentioned earlier today, I'm a conservative person by nature, and one of the things, even though we're providing the best equipment, and we, Councilman Pons mentioned earlier, we're very fortunate to have all of the nice equipment that we have and that we're able to provide the service to the community. But one of the things I pride myself in is whatever our budget is, I'm proud when Phil Sarah stands up here in our department, has mentioned of not overspending our budget or at least providing some funds back to the city, and that's because we realize the cost of the equipment for the fire service.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I move that city council authorizes the city manager to purchase new SCBA equipment for a total purchase price of $239,973.
Second.
Mr. Trivett?
Mr. Zhang?
Aye.
Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Friley?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Foster?
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey?
Aye.
This takes us to the fourth city manager report. Landlord agreement with Williamsburg Economic Development Authority for 943 to 952 Capital Landing Road. Ms. DeWitt, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. You'll remember, in June, the city purchased, closed on the property that the community knows as the DMV Shopping Center at 945 Capital Landing Road. The, I'm going to go through the highlights of this agreement. The city purchased the property, and there's a shopping center and another building on the property, and there's four leases that remain, and there are commercial businesses in those leases. The DMV and the Commonwealth Insurance leases go through September of this year, and the two other businesses, We Do It For You and The Convenience Store, have leases through July of 2018. So another year and a half of a month. The state code of Virginia does not allow cities to be landlords of real property that has commercial uses on it. However, the state code does allow your Economic Development Authority to do this. So this agreement outlines that the EDA will manage this property for you, collect the rents, and deal with the management concerns of that property until the leases have ended, which is anticipated August 1st of 2018, when the city's plans will kick back in. The plans are to demolish these buildings and then revert this property to another commercial use. Because the community may be interested, the DMV's plans are to relocate to the Williamsburg Crossing Shopping Center on the corner of John Tyler and Route 199, and they plan to do so at the end of their lease at this property at the end of September. Happy to answer any questions.
I'm not going to participate, my firm represents parties related to the subject property.
I just wanted to say that this isn't a new process for the EDA. Aren't there other agreements in place with other property in the city? So this is sort of a standard process?
This is a very standard process for the state of Virginia, because the state code does not allow the cities to do this. This will be the first time our Economic Development Authority does this, but you've done these arrangements with your housing authority in the past. Very common procedure.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. DeWitt. Can you talk to us about where the rents that you receive go and how those funds are used?
Certainly. So the rents, as any commercial enterprise that has tenants, the lease revenues will go to pay for common area maintenance fees. There's an aspect of the rental payment that is that, and then any other unknown costs that may occur on the property for maintenance or repairs. Insurance and all of those things, exactly. But there may very well be net proceeds from that, and that would be used by the Economic Development Authority for economic development purposes.
Thank you so much for your presentation. Actually, Mr. Pons answered a question that I had, so it worked out. Thank you very much.
On your way.
There you go.
Ms. DeWitt, we, the DMV can take care of itself. We have three other tenants that are currently in the shopping center. Will we be working with them over the intervening time period if they're interested to help them find new locations?
Yes. In fact, one of them has found another location in the city, and if they're not under contract, at least paper is being exchanged, and they're close, and we are in communications with the other two about possible, possibilities for relocation in the city.
And can you just say a few words, please, about why the city was interested in this particular piece of property?
Certainly. So you'll remember back in 2009, 2010, there was a mayor's task force to talk about the northeast triangle. It's an area of the city that used to be a primary commercial corridor into the city. That started to change in the mid-1970s when the Interstate 64 was built. That was the first road to bypass this area. There's been several other roads, including 199 and Route 132, that bypassed what used to be one of the main entrances into the city. This is not a unique story to Williamsburg. This happened across the United States and with most cities and localities. Having said that, because of those bypasses, we've not seen much private investment in this corridor, and additionally, the assessed values in this corridor have been lower than our other commercial corridors. So all of that to say, there was a mayor's task force to talk about these issues, and what can, what is the city's role to help increase the interest for private investment in that corridor? The city does a really good job with infrastructure and road building and creating a sense of place. So that was one of the recommendations of, to build sidewalks and make it a more pedestrian, bicycle, and customer-friendly destination. The city is in, has done some of that out there, but is doing a design to do more of that over there. Additionally, the city has purchased the two properties south of this property that were underutilized, old product motels that were purchased by the city and demolished for the same intention, that we would assemble property in that area and be able to bring in a private developer to spend private money to invest in commercial uses there. So this was the third piece of that string of properties that the city was aiming to assemble to bring in a private investor.
So we have, we had three disparate pieces of property on what had been a major entrance corridor that form a focal point where the road comes into the city, and the intent was that if we own them, we could put them together and put them back into the private market for a larger, more impactful development to transform a corridor that had withered over time because of a loss of vehicle traffic and create a sense of place that will drive more people to that part of the city and do more business and attract more business in turn.
And increase property values. Yes, you said that better than I did. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I hate to put words in your mouth, I really do.
Well, and I think, you know, just to kind of put my spin on it, you know, I think the city...
I didn't spin it.
No, I said, well, it is true. You know, we have lacked the opportunity for greenfield development, and much of new product that's come to the Williamsburg market has happened out, and the county's kind of moving away from the center for lots of reasons, but one is, there was greenfield out there. And so in order to provide that greenfield opportunity, the city engaged in its assemblage of property, and so to make fruition the benefits that you just mentioned.
And we couldn't do this type of work if we were to find a tourism-related or tourism-friendly opportunity to put there to anchor this corridor. We can't do that without resources.
Exactly.
Other questions?
I move that city council authorizes the city manager to execute an agreement with the EDA to assume the leases of the property at 943 through 952 Capital Landing Road.
Second. Stupstaining. Second.
You almost did. Mr. Trivett, that was Mr. Pons seconding.
Thank you.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Zhang?
Aye.
Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Friley?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Foster?
Second.
And Ms. Ramsey?
Aye.
Well, that concludes our city manager reports. He seems to have everybody else do his reporting for him. This takes us to our city attorney reports, the first of which is expansion of the Williamsburg Redevelopment Board of Commissioners. Ms. Shelton?
As council, I hope remembers from last month, when I was reporting the actions of the General Assembly, the General Assembly approved Senate Bill 1134, which allows the city of Williamsburg pursuant to its charter and amendment thereto to expand the Board of Commissioners from five members to seven members. This is pursuant to a memorandum of understanding with the housing authority that city council adopted last May. So that is the authorization for city council to take the action. What is before city council today is the action. And so the ordinance that you have in front of you amend Section 2-131 of the city code to expand the membership of the Williamsburg Redevelopment and Housing Authority from five members to seven members. Five members will continue to be comprised of the Williamsburg City Council sitting as board members, with two additional members being appointed by city council, one of whom needs to be a resident of the city at large, and one of whom needs to be a resident of the public housing authority property, public housing sites. Their terms are for four years, and nothing else has changed. So just the expansion of the board from five to seven members and how they are appointed. This completes the city's obligations with respect to the MOU. The Department of Housing and Urban Development is happy with this resolution to the issues that they had, and so city staff recommends that city council adopt proposed ordinance 17-12. I will note that this amendment to the city code is effective immediately upon its adoption should council adopt it.
Questions? Ms. Shelton, does the four years commence from the day of appointment or from some date in the fiscal year?
Well, I have provided for the exact appointment dates for the appointment that is on your agenda for later today, and I'm going to try to get those through to June 30th, so you've got a regular appointment schedule.
Thank you.
Just wanted to say one thing. You know, I think it's great that it's expanded to allow more folks from the city, dedicated folks from the city to get involved, but also have the input from our public housing authority, and I think that's quite crucial, because we here can't always assume what's going on in the authorities, so it's great to have that input and insight. And also, I just wanted to thank our state delegation, including Delegate Mike Mullen and Senator Mason for putting this up. From what I understood, if we couldn't get this through because of the unique nature of how localities and states operate because of the Dillon Rule, this is something we had to get done, but also had to get through the entire General Assembly, which could be a huge thing, a huge hurdle to go over, and the governor for signing the bill. So, you know, just wanted to thank them publicly for that, and I'm excited to move forward with this new Board of Commissioners. Thank you.
With that excitement, would you like to make a motion?
Sure. I'd be happy to. Mr. Mayor, I move that city council adopt proposed ordinance 17-12 as presented.
Second.
Mr. Trivett?
Mr. Zhang?
Aye.
Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Friley?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Foster?
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey?
Aye.
Takes us to amendments to city water and sewer billing and collection processes, proposed ordinance 17-13.
I'm going to preface this by saying, with the exception of one amendment to this code section, all of this is required by changes to the code of Virginia, so this is largely housekeeping for city council, but I'm going to explain what this does to the best of my ability. The billing processes for billing water and sewer connections were modified pursuant to Senate Bill 1189. Primarily, it dealt, the bill dealt with how do you treat owner-occupied residential dwellings for purposes of water billing, and how do you deal with tenant-occupied dwellings? And under current or former law, we were, we required the owner to authorize pursuant to an application provided by the city of Williamsburg, the tenant with the ability to put that water in their own name. The state law has been amended to allow that to happen either by lease or by a separate writing that's substantially in a particular form provided by the statute. It does not have to be pursuant to a city-generated form any longer. And so the code is amended to provide for that change in the application process. The change that is not provided by state law is a change to the penalties for cutting water on or off and injuring or turning on a fire hydrant. Under existing city code, those are simply characterized as misdemeanors, and anything that is classed as a misdemeanor without a specific penalty associated with them is a Class 1 misdemeanor, and the penalty is a $2,500 fine and 12 months in jail. Staff requested that we modify at least part of that, and so we have provided for specific penalties that are not quite that severe. For cutting water on or off, we've requested that... For cutting water on or off, we've requested that council in this proposed ordinance provide for the first offense to be a civil penalty of $150. That is consistent with what they do in James City County and York County and so we're trying to maintain consistency with the counties in doing that. We have a lot of contractors that move between jurisdictions and they don't always know which jurisdiction they're in at a particular job site. And so, we think that's a reasonable and appropriate solution to that. Gosh, I wasn't sure I was in the city of Williamsburg as opposed to providing for a, a serious misdemeanor. If it continues, however, then they do become misdemeanors and they would be Class 2 misdemeanors. The same is true with turning on a fire hydrant or a fire hydrant valve would be Class 4 misdemeanor for the first offense and a Class 2 misdemeanor for the second offense. So, that's consistent with what the state law allows, but it's not as severe as what's currently in the code. The disconnecting services are the final step of this. If someone fails to pay their water and sewer bill, there are two separate processes for owner-occupied property or tenant-occupied property. The tenant has the water in their name. And basically, the steps are for owner-occupied property, you send a notice after 60 days delinquency. With 10 days of notice, you can shut off the water and then you can place a lien on the property for the value of the water bill that wasn't paid, which is consistent with a tax lien. For a tenant, for property that is in a tenant's name, you have to add one step to that, which is a reasonable attempt to collect the amounts that are delinquent from the tenant. And the state code says what is reasonable. So, according to the state code, that is either to use the deposit to offset the cost or to use the state debt set-off collection process or to hire a debt collector. And you have to take that next step before you provide notice to the owner that you're going to attempt to collect that water bill from the owner. And of course, you have to provide that step before you can place lien on the property. So, that's a lot. The city code has been amended to include all of those changes. All but the penalties provision are required by the, the changes to the state law this year and so the staff's recommendation is that City Council adopt 17-13.
The three stages with the step with collecting the debt from the tenant, the deposit, the tax offset, the debt collector, is that an or proposition?
Or.
No questions?
I have one other question. The turning off of water or turning on a, a fire hydrant, are, are these accidental generally or are there, are there?
I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to pass that along to our city engineer who deals with these.
Mr. Mayor, generally, these happen, you know, a handful of times a year and a lot of times, it's just contractors from other jurisdictions might have a hydrant meter that they're issued, but they don't realize they're in the city of Williamsburg and so they'll connect up to our hydrant meters thinking they're in another jurisdiction. That's the most common one. The other thing we have is like building contractors who a plumber will come out and actually run a straight pipe across a meter and turn on the water so that they can have it for testing purposes or, you know, installing masonry and stuff. And so, we, we, we get a handful of these incidents that occur every year and lately, it's just, you know, it just depends on how often they happen.
Ms. Shelton, is it, is this the same if, I'm not expecting that anybody would do this, but should somebody decide they just want to disrupt a community and go around and start turning on all the hydrants, is that a different level of offense or is it the same?
It's the same.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I move City Council adopt proposed ordinance 17-13.
Second.
Mr. Trevitt?
Mr. Zhang?
Aye.
Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Fraley?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Foster?
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey?
Aye.
Okay, that concludes our city attorney reports. This takes us to unfinished business. We have one category and four items underneath it, which are all related to the Tourism Development Fund. I, I, the council has talked about this a number of times at public meetings. We had a, a special meeting recently on a Saturday. We discussed it again at, well, we just, we, the community discussed it. We spoke a little bit about it this past Monday at our work session. And one thing we've heard, I think repeatedly from people, is that they would like some more time to understand what this process is about. There's been a specific suggestion that maybe we should hold another public forum or gathering to answer questions, to make sure that we, we've done everything we can to answer the community's questions about the rationale for this, how it would work and what we hope to accomplish. And I understand from my colleagues that, that, that's a direction they would like to go. So, we have the option to either vote on these items or we can table them again to a specific meeting. Is that correct?
You can postpone them to a meeting more than 30 days. If you table them, they will come back next month.
I move that we table all of the items under the Tourism Development Fund under unfinished business.
Second.
Mr. Trevitt?
Mr. Zhang?
Aye.
Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Fraley?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Foster?
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey?
Aye.
And Mr. Collins, given our desire to engage the community in another public forum, could staff work on putting together a format for how that might work and come up with a date and time and place where we could hold that event?
We will.
And I would encourage my colleagues on council, if you have specific questions that have not been answered, that you need answers for, please let staff know so they can include that in the presentation at that meeting. And if you have questions you've heard repeatedly from the community, or even if you've heard it individually from the community that you think are important to be addressed in a presentation, please let staff know that as well.
Sure.
Wanted to also note, we also have a Tourism Development Fund page, so there's information there and I'm assuming this meeting will be up there as well. But for citizens who also want to provide specific ideas, I know that our e-comment or our online forum is also open. How would they be able to access that? Is that, is there going to be a link at the webpage for the PDF or?
But the-
Or they can email all of us too, but I mean, is there a way for them to also comment?
So, so the public will be able to comment at the meeting? Right now, you can comment to the agenda items through e-council and you can email council directly.
I think one of the, maybe even more important than the public comment at the meeting, we, we've had a number of opportunities for that. We can have that again, but the opportunity to ask questions and have those questions answered, that's one component I think we've been lacking. Any other comments, discussion? I know that probably some people here would like to address council on this. We're only moments away from open forum, so if you can bear with us for just a moment. We have one item of new business, appointment to the Williamsburg Redevelopment Housing Authority Board.
I move that City Council appoint Edward Ted Maslin to the Williamsburg Redevelopment and Housing Authority for term beginning July 13th, 2017 and ending June 30th, 2021.
Second.
Mr. Trevitt?
Mr. Zhang?
Aye.
Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Fraley?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Foster?
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey?
Aye.
Takes us to open forum. Mr. Trevitt, do you happen to have some speakers' cards?
Do.
Thank you. I'll call the speakers' cards in order and we, once we, once we go through those, we'll open the floor to anybody else who would like to speak. First of which is Charlie Glazner. And as you approach the podium, please, Mr. Glazner, if you could state your name and address, that would be very helpful for our acting clerk of council.
I live at 319 South Boundary Street. The Colonial Williamsburg Foundation came at a most opportune time, a time of economic stress, the Great Depression. Those were challenging times, but we live in challenging times today too. 25 years ago, Colonial Williamsburg could have bought a pickup truck for probably $5,000 to $10,000. Today, that same truck would probably run near $45,000. Their maintenance people could paint a house and that paint job would last 15 to 20 years. Today, that job probably won't last more than five years. The challenges Colonial Williamsburg faces are new and different and changing, and changing much more quickly. Colonial Williamsburg has been very much a stabilizing factor in our city, always helpful in many ways outside the parameters of their core purpose. The city's hotels, restaurants, businesses are evidence of their positive collateral benefit. Our decisions have to be made and the leadership of the foundation has their work cut out for them. We all have every confidence that they will be successful. The city's cooperation is necessary at this critical time, a time every bit as critical as those times of long ago when America first experimented with self-governance, just a few blocks from where we now gather. What a gift that when the community needed it most in the throes of the Great Depression, wise people came together with such a vision as restoring the place where that successful experiment occurred. Today, it's Colonial Williamsburg that needs the helping hand. I would ask the leadership of the city to give the foundation every consideration possible. Now, it's your time to be wise.
Thank you, Mr. Glazner. Next speaker's card is Billy Scruggs.
Mr. Mayor, council members, I'm going to have to change my comments a little bit. I was a little surprised at the vote you just took. Very grateful for it. I'm going to be very presumptuous. I, I've talked to some of y'all about what I think a next step could be and I'm going to go ahead and offer it today for what it's worth. I think you could establish a meeting with a similar format to the comprehensive plan, planning process, which is open to the public. Council can meet in a less formal location such as the Community Building. You choose and invite a panel of stakeholders, maybe four or five, one from the restaurant industry, one from our DMO, one from Colonial Williamsburg, one from the hotel industry, and maybe one from the college. It would be a full-day meeting, 9:00 to 12:00 in the morning, break for lunch, 1:00 to 4:00 in the afternoon. Have a non-vested facilitator. The agenda items might include, in the morning, number one, TDF overview. We've heard from you. Give more than five minutes to each stakeholder representative to hear what they think. Number two, reman meal tax. Panel representatives from these two sectors could lead the discussion. Have lunch, take a break. After lunch, two agenda items. Number one, the admissions tax. This is very important to me. Give Colonial Williamsburg more than five minutes to help us understand why they think that this should not happen. Don't we all deserve to hear more than a five-minute soundbite from our most significant tourism driver on this proposed tax? Second agenda item in the afternoon. Discuss the effects implementation of this legislation will have on city and regional tourism partners, both good and bad, because there will be both good and bad. We know that. Questions from others invited would be written and submitted to the facilitator to be read for answers from the panel, council, or staff, perhaps even offer some roundtable breakouts. This venue offers stakeholders the opportunity to speak with you and each other face-to-face. As you have obviously seen, the community needs to have this conversation. In all humility, I don't know that this is the best option to proceed. I was going to say, I do know that if you vote to proceed today without this kind of additional input, the resulting legislation will only decrease motivation and interest of many of our partners. It could even create new barriers to the results you seek in the short term, whereas the decision you have made today engaging our tourism partners has a better chance of achieving results that will truly make a difference for the city as a tourism destination. Thank you again for your decision to, to wait and discuss this a little more.
Thank you, Mr. Scruggs. Next speaker's card is Gary Shelley.
I am Gary Shelley, 205 Indian Springs. It's obvious that most of the people in the room here would like to speak about the tax proposal. I would be happy to defer my time.
Go ahead.
If you'd like me to go, I'll go now. Gary Shelley, 205 Indian Springs. And I'd like to say, first of all, it's, it's so wonderful to be able to speak in an open forum like this about matters of importance to me. And I'm speaking about a matter that I've spoken about every month this year previously and I've been stonewalled on every occasion. I'm here to ask you, Mr. Mayor, for the seventh time this year, why legally mandated minutes to a council retreat were not provided by the city council and whether the document that was belatedly inserted into our city's records satisfy FOIA requirements? More importantly, I'm also asking why you have repeatedly refused to address the issue. The minutes would have included discussion regarding the notorious 110 Harrison Avenue fiasco. One person who took a particular interest in the matter was Andy Hungerman. Andy was known for his genuine interest in and concern for others and he earned the highest respect of all who knew him. He was deeply committed to Williamsburg. After retiring as Vice President of Operations for Colonial Williamsburg, Andy became the Executive Director of the Williamsburg Redevelopment and Housing Authority. Five summers ago, I happened to run into Andy one night at the shopping center. Andy had witnessed me speak about 110 Harrison at several city council meetings. He asked if I would be willing to meet with him to discuss this disastrous policy. Given the enormous workload that Andy inherited at the WRHA, he had no time to meet during work hours, yet he generously found time to spend two hours in his office with me one evening after dinner. Andy was perplexed. Why would the WRHA involve itself in such a venture? I was able to supply him with the details, including the facts and figures, the timeline, the people involved and their roles, the disregard for transparency, the angry reaction from college students and neighbors, the catastrophic loss of money, the burden on the authority, and council stonewalling of my concerns. I distinctly remember Andy asking me if I believed that Paul Fraley was honest. He thought that you were. I responded that I would certainly hope so, but that I did not know the role that you played in the debacle. Your appointment as our mayor comes with responsibilities that you owe our citizens. You must be committed to transparency and you must always, always respond to citizen concerns. Trust must be constantly earned. Power that comes with your position doesn't necessarily corrupt, but it always reveals character. You have repeatedly and defiantly refused to respond to a legitimate citizen concern. You have failed your constituents. Williamsburg deserves better. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Shelley. That takes us to Aaron DeGraff.
I'm Aaron DeGraff and I pretty much live at the Muscarelli Museum of Art where I'm the director. Mr. Mayor, council, Mr. Collins, and I also want to recognize Karen Riordan. I'm here to thank you for your investment in the Botticelli exhibition that we had just some months ago at the Muscarelli Museum of Art. That investment helped to target marketing and advertising and social media announcements in three key market areas that we wanted to reach and that you all wanted to reach for Williamsburg to be a tourism destination spot. That's the greater northern Virginia area, the Raleigh Durham area, and the Charlotte, North Carolina area. We have some statistical information I can share with you on the success of that media campaign in those areas with regards to looking into this show and online with different devices, on your phone, or, or the kind of times that it came up on apps- on your phone, or the kind of times that it came up on apps if you pulled up the Weather Channel or something like that. They were significantly above average. I think more importantly, the 111,000 people that attended the Botticelli Show in seven weeks during the weakest tourism part of the year was noteworthy. I think it's pretty astounding. There's a lot of anecdotal information, and I appreciate Karen Reardon being here because she was a partner on this to come and approach you all for $40,000 of the Tourism Contingency Fund money to do this. Being out and about in town almost every night for eight weeks because it was a pretty intense time, you know, I remember sitting in Sal's one afternoon, a Wednesday afternoon at 4:00, getting a salad. Now, it's a Wednesday afternoon at 4:00. People are sitting around, and you may not notice if you hear the name Jones or Smith. But Botticelli is a different story, okay? And I remember that afternoon, I heard five different tables talking about the Botticelli Exhibition. So I walked up to the tables, constantly got stories from a family of five that came down from Rochester, New York specifically to see this show and spend three nights in hotels in the city and eat meals downtown. I spent a lot of time, Blue Talon, all of the restaurants on Merchant Square, and every day for breakfast, lunch, and dinner at those places that offered that, people were looking through their books, they had their brochures, and they're talking about Botticelli. I don't know if this means a lot to a lot of people, but to realize that the Muscarelli Museum and the investment you all made in helping us communicate something like one of the greatest artists in the history of the world coming to our community was an important investment to make. I think I heard anecdotally recently that Mr. Scruggs was 50 rooms over average during this period. And I'll point out again, this, the show opened February 10th and closed August 15th, absolutely the deadest part of the year. But if you spend a lot of time out and about in the community, especially in our businesses downtown, and I consider myself running a downtown business, it was very, very gratifying to see that something that we could do could generate a lot of business for our colleague, our colleague businesses in the community. You know, DeGraff is a Dutch name, and so I live by a lot of Dutch proverbs. My most famous one is "A rising tide floats all the boats." So our brand of Williamsburg is fantastic. We are going to have to close in about a year and go dark while they build a version of a new and expanded museum, but we appreciate what you all have done, and we'd like to come back to you again in the future because we don't plan to stop with simply that exhibition. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. DeGraff. Will Murray.
Good afternoon, Mayor Filing and City Council team. I'm Will Murray, 703 Goodwin Street in Williamsburg. First of all, I wanted to say, in the fire department, you talk about the SCBA equipment, and I worked at the power station for many, many years, and when you have to put the SCBA on, you said after 45 minutes there, somebody asks what happens next, you said you have to go back in again. That is incredible, because we do 30 minutes there, and you don't go back in again at the power station. Just to be able to wear the equipment there and perform a function is very incredible. Okay. So listening to the audience, I've been coming to these meetings for, this is my fourth or fifth meeting I've been coming, and I enjoy coming to the meetings. I really enjoy this. But listening to the audience over the last so many weeks, it is clear that it is, in my opinion, is a hotel and motel industry that has an agenda to push the TDF. It is the people associated with the industry who keep saying, "Time is of the essence, and we need this now." So in order to accomplish their agenda, they need money, and it's pushing for taxes on restaurants and attractions. The restaurants and attractions were not included in the initial discussions because they were surprised to hear about it, that the additional taxes were being applied to them. That was in the June meeting when they started coming up and saying, "I didn't know about this." So it appears that this idea of a TDF there and how we're going to pay for it was conceived in a vacuum. And the hotel industry is not really contributing any more than what they do right now since the tax, since they're being taxed at 2%, but that's replacing the $2 a night tax. So it's essentially the same dollar amount there. So it appears that the hotel and motel industry is really asking that the restaurants and attractions pay for the TDF. Now, I don't know what everybody does. Everybody up there has a job outside of here, and I don't know exactly what everybody does except I know what Mr. Filing does, works for CW. But I would, I would think, or I would hope, that if anyone in the council associated with the hotel industry would recluse themselves from voting, so it's not taken as a appearance of a conflict of interest, similar to what the mayor does when he recluses himself from voting on CW issues, or what the vice mayor did today, he said, "I'm not going to vote on an issue because his firm is involved with that." One other thing is that, I've mentioned this to a couple of people on the city council, that the people in the community, and I talk to people in my neighborhood, and they don't really fully understand everything that's going on here, and I don't fully understand it either. But I have mentioned, you guys are going to write letters to the Virginia Gazette and sign your name to them as to what we're doing, why we're doing it, and what's the benefits to it there. Because I do look at the city website here, and it has all boilerplate stuff about what we're doing. And I did ask, you know, I think it was last Monday, they said we're going to put all the potential ideas that we want to implement on the website. And I look it up here, and when I look at this, I go to the city of Williamsburg, and there is a TDF Tourism Development Fund on here. When I click on this, and all I see is, it has a what types of projects could be approved, and a lot of stuff is the boilerplate stuff. So I thought, I'm sure there's another link on here that talks about the very specific projects that we're talking about, that we talked about on Monday. So I'm sure there's a link, but it's not on the TDF fund itself, or link. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Mr. Collins, could you have somebody look into that, please?
Monday's presentation is on that site with the list in it, but we'll, we can break that out to be more clear.
If we can make sure it's explicitly presented or linked on the TDF site, I think that would be helpful to people.
We have to have one more, Mr. Collins' question.
Sir?
Mr. Collins, you mind to remind me and the public when and with what frequency you met with the restaurant industry throughout this spring?
So the first time the Tourism Development Fund was proposed by staff in response to council's question from the previous fall was at the January budget retreat. Following that, council assigned Councilman Pons to be the project lead for council and work with staff. Councilman Pons and I started meeting with restaurateurs, hoteliers, attraction staff in February and March prior to the draft program being presented at work session in council in April. We also met with the Chamber and Tourism Alliance, different leadership there, met with leadership there, the staff there, the executive board of the Chamber and Tourism Alliance, and then the board of the Chamber and Tourism Alliance presenting on this topic during that time period as well, prior to it being brought out to the general public in April, subsequently put on council's agenda at council's request for June and delayed the past two times. I think that's the timeline from then to now.
Thank you. Very good.
Still an open forum. We've exhausted the speaker's card, so anybody who'd like to come up and address council, please do so. Mr. Singley, you're up first. Come on, come on down.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, city manager. I commend you on the decision that you made prior to opening up the TDF here and allowing us, the public, to have more comments as well as your stakeholders. I was going to close my statements today with making a statement of, or a request. Take your time to build a consensus amongst the citizens and your stakeholders, and you've already done that. In the June 8th meeting that we had, it gave me some pause when we started the process, reading prepared statements and sharing with us which way each individual was going to vote without hearing the public comments in there. I'd like to address several issues. One, my office is across the street. I reside in downtown Beena, Virginia, which is in Gloucester. I was raised in Jame City County, however. I specifically like to address the funding stream that was presented last Saturday at the work session, which you gave three options, A, B, and C. And I'd like to devote my time here today to discuss a fourth option, which is option D. Think the, in the past, and I think that you all will attest to this, as well as your staff, is the fact that the city of Williamsburg has enjoyed year after year one of the lowest tax rates in the Commonwealth of Virginia, if not the lowest tax rate. I think that's due for primarily two reasons. I think it's the efficiency of your staff, this council, as well as your predecessors, and the fact that they've been lean, they're very interactive with their citizens. I always enjoy to come to these presentations because you can hear your citizens articulate their positions. Majority of the time, there's no animosity. We can actually have civil discourse on this. But when you look at the 777 program or plan that you all were talking about, there is a disparity in the tax rate increases for the specific three industries that you're talking about. As mentioned by a previous speaker, the $2 tax rate that is currently enjoyed, that goes to WADMAC, that the hotel operators pay for an individual stay of a customer every night, as well as the timeshares for transient timeshares, for transient business in there, is more than offset by the 2% reduction that you're, or 2% increase that you're talking about for the restaurant or for the hotel operators. The 2% that you are talking about increasing to seven from five to seven with regards to restaurateurs in this marketplace is an aggregate, is an increase in the aggregate number that they pay. For those who are familiar with both industries, the hoteliers in this marketplace in the summer months, in those months in which you have almost 100% occupancy, they are constantly calling around to other hotels and competitors in the marketplace to find out whether it's on a 15-minute basis or on a 30-minute basis of where the market is. They're doing their job. They're adjusting that price, that ADR that they're getting, that room night price that they're getting that night, based upon real-time data, and they go up or down depending upon that to maximize their income for that evening. I dare say that there is not a restaurateur in the city who has a printing machine in the back of his, of his restaurant or of his kitchen in which he can print out menus on a 15-minute basis adjusting his price. And so unfortunately, I think, in some of the restaurateurs that I talk to, as well as hotel operators, we're creating some angst between those, which we shouldn't. I think we are all here tonight and in the past meetings to make this a better community. The past, we've enjoyed this, this low tax rate of 57 cents compared to York County of 75 cents and 84 cents for Jame City County currently. With regards to the admission tax, it's a 7% increase in admissions tax, and the majority of that's going to be derived from Colonial Williamsburg. Mr. Glazner addressed previously with regards to the financial situation that Mr. Reese came out with two weeks ago. Not that it's dire, but it's correctable, but we need to assist them. And I would submit to you that increasing admissions tax by 7% on a ticket, and we can all talk about the incremental cost in that, but it's an aggregate number. And if your average ticket is $50 per person, that goes to 53.50. Majority of us in this room can afford to do that, but I would say that the majority of people that come to Colonial Williamsburg today, it's a push for them to do that. And based upon the economic courses that I took in college in there, typically when you increase the price of an item, the number of units sold declines unless it's scarce. And what CW has to offer is not scarce due to the amount of competition that we have seen occur not only in the southeastern part of Virginia, but up and down the East Coast for young families and the amount of discretionary time that they have to be able to devote to recreating. So my proposal to you is an option D. I own three commercial properties and a residential lot in the city of Williamsburg. I pay $14,000 a year in real estate taxes. Based upon the proposal that you all have in front, that you're considering in there, this would not affect my tax rate at all. But I think in my business, and what I see as a quality of life in Williamsburg, would be affected by that, and I think I should participate in some of the pain as well. And I think if you went to the citizens and you were directed to citizens in the city of Williamsburg, that they wouldn't mind you increasing the mill on their residential property tax rate. Some in this audience might take issue with that today. But in my case, if you went up four mills, basically each mill equates to $185,000 a year for tax coffers for the Commonwealth, for the city of Williamsburg, that that would raise approximately an additional $800,000. And I'm willing to do that, and I say that the majority of the people, of your constituents, would probably have to do that. And I think with the direction that you took earlier in this meeting, that you're setting the tables to be, for your constituents to come forth to you and support such a program. And I know that you use those monies for your capital improvement, you're looking at possibly building a new fire station and such. But the reason that we're talking about raising the TDF is because we're looking to raise those monies in the future that are going to come into the tax coffers, and that's going to benefit all of us, our restaurateurs, our hoteliers, businessmen like me, and your residents. And therefore, in the, in the long term, which is what we're looking at, in the long term, the city of Williamsburg will be better off, and I think will be more apt to even reduce our tax rates further for real estate, possibly even below the 57 cents per mill. So I appreciate your consideration and your time, and appreciate the decision that you all made today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Singley. Anybody else like to address council? Please.
My name is General XO. I live at 127 Banneker Drive. Some of you guys know me. I was here like five years ago. I had a contract with the city agreement to use the city seal for tourism, for t-shirts. In that past five years, I've done a lot of research studying and so on and so forth about our area. What I propose is that we change the name, not change the name of our city, but this is the birthplace of America, and so I mean t-shirts. I always look at it like, when people come here and they ask me where they're at, I say, "This is the birthplace of America. If we all know this is the birthplace of America, why don't we advertise it as that?" That brings in all these people who now want to see the birthplace of America. The tourism, there are so many different things that could be taken advantage of just by rebranding our city as that. So I have a bunch of different stuff that I have. These are, these are the old ones that I did. These are five years ago. So just a little, it's flashier, it's something that gets people to think about where we are. They're opening 64 up. You have to forgive me for a second, I'm just going to wild out. Okay. So they're opening up 64. Nice sign on the highway says, "Welcome to the birthplace of America." Captures your attention. Now people want to come off the highway, they want to see the birthplace of America. Everything is already here, we have everything already in place, we just don't call it the birthplace of America. Call it the birthplace of America is like going to Disneyland. You want to go to Mexico, get a Mexico t-shirt. You come to Williamsburg, t-shirt. You get a birthplace of America t-shirt. Birthplace of America mug, or a hat, or bumper sticker. Now, when people leave Williamsburg and they go back to their homes, they tell their friends, "Where were you at this weekend? I was in the birthplace of America." Can you explain it to me? Yes, 1607 is Jame Town, it's Williamsburg, the colonial capital, we have all of it already, we just don't call it that. That was my little spiel. I would like to give you guys shirts, but apparently the company that I had, they messed up my shirt order, so they'll be here like tomorrow or something, so. But that's basically my spiel. Just putting it on the table, I believe that me and Mr. Collins are working on something as far as the city seal is concerned. I know he still has to figure out which designs that you guys will allow me to use, but I'm also talking with Yorktown and now with Jame Town, with Jame City County as far as getting their seals for my t-shirts also. So we'll see what happens, but just letting you guys know what I've been doing in the past five years. Thank you.
Thank you for your enthusiasm. Would anybody else like to speak? Would anybody else like to speak? Last call. Seeing no one else, close the public forum. Any business for closed session? No?
Who will we adjourn?
Mr. Trivet?
I'm sorry, the motion was made by...
Councilman Foster, seconded by Pons.
Mr. Zane?
Aye.
Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Filing?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Foster?
Aye.
Aye.